Right, okay, well, look, if we get started, if she comes, just give me a nod, please, Sean or Ian, and let me know she's joining. So Ian, if you would like to start recording, that'd be brilliant.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, evening, everybody, and thank you for attending. If we move on to the agenda, we've got the first item is to elect a new deputy chair. Do we have any volunteers for the position of deputy chair? Okay, Dave?
That's Carolyn. Nomination, Steve.
Sorry, what was that, Sean?
You'll need somebody to propose second.
I will do. I'll wait till Carolyn comes in and I'll ask the question again.
She's just coming now. I'm just waiting for her to... Carolyn? Can't hear her.
Just give her a second to get on.
Who's Ellen Davis?
It's Carolyn.
Right, okay.
Carolyn, you need to press your video.
Sean, shall we move on and see if she joins?
Yeah, yeah, it's not a lot we can say. Yeah, I can't, I can't hear her.
That's right. So we've got...
Can you not do that as participants? You can press other people so that they...
No, I can make, I can mute you, and I can ask you to unmute yourself, but it's saying here she's not muted, but the video's not there.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, so, election of a new deputy chair. So, other than Dave, is anybody volunteering for that position? Okay, can we have somebody to propose Dave and somebody to second Dave, and then we'll take a vote on that then, please?
I'll nominate Dave.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second too.
Thank you, Julie. All in favour?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, everybody. Do the job.
Welcome, welcome on board even further, Dave.
Thank you. Been there before, mate. Been there before.
Okay, apologies for absence. We do, we do have a resignation that has, Marisa has sent in quite a nice email. She's decided to resign from the council, and she's just gone on record. She said she would like to thank everybody, and she's had a, it's been a pleasure working with people while she's been on the council over the last six years.
We'll send a thank you letter to her.
I think that might, that might be very fitting, Dave. Sean, can we action that, send a thank you letter to Marisa? Okay, lovely. Thank you. Number three, to consider any variations of order of business. I've got two items I'd like to discuss, please. I'd like to move item 18, which is co-option of councillor. I'd like to move that to point five, and I would like to move personnel to private. So if I start off, I'd like to propose that we move item 18, which is the councillor to point five, so it's dealt with at the beginning of the meeting. Do we have anyone that will second that?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favour? Okay, Sean, do you need to make a recorded vote of that?
No, I don't. Is everybody showing their hands? I've seen, as I say, I've seen hands from all seven, Jason and Dave. Yeah, you're just gonna have to show me your hands, boys and girls, if you don't mind. Yeah, everyone's shown hands. We're all good.
So, can you clarify what the co-option of the two councillors means?
Okay, we've got, Dawn rather, we've got, we've got somebody tonight who has asked to be co-opted, but we actually have, when we advertised it, we had two vacancies, but we only have one person looking to be co-opted tonight.
And is that person here? I thought Jason had already been co-opted on.
No, it's, it's, well, can we move on to it if we've agreed to bring it forward? Because that'll be the next item after the minutes of the previous meeting. Is that okay?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
I just need a resolution on moving the personnel into confidential, if that's all right.
That one. So, I'd also like to propose that we move personnel to private at the end of this meeting. So do we have anybody that would second that?
I'll second that, Steve.
Thank you, Jason. All in favour?
Yes.
Brilliant, thank you. So both motions carried.
Minutes next, Dave.
So on to the minutes of the next, of the last meeting. Has everybody read the minutes? Did anybody have any problems or questions regarding the minutes? We're happy that they're a true reflection of the, of the last meeting, yeah? I'd like to propose that we accept the minutes from the last meeting. Sorry, Dave.
Seconded.
Oh, you're seconding it. So, yeah, I'd like to propose that we accept the minutes of the meeting from the 20th of August, seconded by Dave. Everybody in favour?
Yes.
Hands, Jason, hands, that's it. Yeah, yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. So, the new number five was point 18, is councillor co-option for the two councillor vacancies. We've advert, we advertised, we advertised that there was two vacancies available. We have had one person who has applied, joined the council. That person is Jason Atkins, who is, as we all know, is already on, he's our district and county councillor, and he is looking to forge a greater working relationship with us as a town council, as well as being a good advocate for the district and county. So, as Jason is the only person who has applied at this stage, I'd like to move it to a vote that we co-opt Jason Atkins onto Dalidale Town Council. Do we have someone? Thank you, Dave. Is that you seconding that, Dave?
It was.
Thank you. All in favour? So...
Yeah, I've got four, and obviously yourself.
Yeah. All of those against? Thank you.
I've got three against.
Sean, how do I get my, my, my name?
Yeah, can you, can you just tell me which way, can you, gonna have a yea or a nay, please?
Yes, in favour. How do I get my face, rather than just a name?
The, the video is the, you need to go down to the corner and put, oh, the video camera button. If you click on that one, that should put you on, and join video.
Oh, yeah.
That's got you. Were you in favour, Carolyn?
Thanks.
Yeah. I think that was Carolyn in favour. So, yeah, six to three.
Okay, so that's motion carried. So Jason, you're now a member of Dalidale Town Council, and you can now participate in the meeting fully.
Yeah. Jason, I will need you to come into the office on Tuesday, if that's all right, and sign the legal notices and do me the declarations, if that's okay.
I'll get back to you, because I think I've got something on Tuesday. I'll have to check my diary.
Okay, no, it's just with Zoom. I'll meet you outside, if that's all right.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, other than that, if you want to email me the decorations, and I'll sign them and post them back.
I need to sign, you need to sign them in front of me for the councillor one, which is, so, if that's all right. But it's the, I'll send you the, I think I've already sent you the, just the interest form already, or at least you should have a copy somewhere. Just fill me that one in to start with.
No, I haven't, so forward me a copy of your interest form.
I'll forward you a copy for that one. Right, thank you.
Okay, and if we come on to declarations of members' interests, I'm assuming that we have Alan and Carolyn, who are all, they're all Whitworth trustees at this stage. Councillor Atkins?
Yeah, I'll declare a personal interest in planning, as I am the Chair of the Committee, that it's, I can still participate in the debate, and I could still vote on it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any declarations of interests?
I have an allotment.
Yeah, Anne has an allotment.
That's fine. Okay, if, are we all happy to move on to public participation? Participation?
Not that, do you got anything, Ian?
We've got nothing this week, Steve, or this month.
That's fine. Okay, so if we move on to town mayor and chair's announcements, a couple of things here, really. I'd like to say thank you very much to Dawn, councillor Ward. Don't look shocked, Dawn. And also to the Whitworth, who hosted very successfully Dalidale in Bloom last week. Dalidale in Bloom have sent a very, very nice email saying thank you very much to the council for their coffee and cake, for all of the fantastic work that they've done in the area, right, well, the work they continue to do, but especially right through Covid. And, and they thoroughly enjoyed the, the tea and cake. They ended up with only 13 there. We didn't have any councillors present, unfortunately, because we thought that we were going to have the full contingent of 15. But there was 13 of them there, and they thoroughly enjoyed it, I think, didn't they, Dawn? Yeah, okay, lovely. Couple of other things. Oh, sorry, the only other thing is, I've had a couple of meetings now with Sean and Ian. They've been very productive, very progressive as well. It, we, we all agree that we want the council to be forward-thinking and very proactive, and we're going to work on that with, with some, with some incentives that we're thinking of over the next month or two, anyway. And regular meetings and communication is going to be key to working together successfully. I don't know if you, Sean or Ian, have anything to add to that?
No, I think you've summed it up succinctly.
Brilliant, okay. But other than that, I don't have any, any other, anything else to report on there. If we move on to point eight, which is the report from Police and or County/District Councilors, so I'll hand over straight away to you, Jason Atkins.
Thank you very much, Chair. There's, there's nothing really to update from County or District. As you know, we've been on shutdown really for the last month, so work will be starting to come along now pretty soon. I mean, the only thing I could probably tell you is yesterday at County Hall, we had discussed the vision Derby stroke devolution, which government are pushing ahead with a white paper. You'll also probably know there's a white paper pertaining to planning, so we'll see what comes out of that. Nothing else to add, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Jason. Any questions? Anybody on any of that? Dave?
Not on Jason, it's just the police. They've been informed and updated on the different activities around Dalidale, including a reported incident that was reported to District through Jason. And they're fully informed about issues of vandalism yet again up on the tipping. We've now got three break-ins through defencing, which I'm trying to attend to at the moment. We've got a dog mess campaign going on by Derbyshire's District Council, which we want to get involved in. And the plot holders down at Church Lane today expressed a lot of concern about that, so we're going to follow that up as an allotment issue, but also, I think the council need to pick that one up as a priority, which will come into the new committees, and we'll take that on board. But that's, that's where we are. But the police have been informed that there are issues around Dalidale at the moment.
Brilliant. Okay, thank you, Dave. Any other questions? Sorry, Julie?
Yeah, just picking up on what, what Dave was saying there about sort of the dog fowling. I've had a resident mention to me about the, the state of the, you know, the cycle path along the side of the railway line. And we were wondering if District could in fact look at putting some bins along there, if possible.
Yeah.
Councillor Atkins?
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair. And I have followed this with a mess-up people leave along the cycle path, because ostensibly it is a county council cycleway, so county are well informed of the state that people are, and what they're leaving in trees, so on and so forth. I can try and pressurise the District Council to put some dog mess bins in, but they're most likely to be normal bins at the end of the trail. They wouldn't put them on in a middle section, so we might be banging those heads against a brick wall, but I'll certainly make that representation to the District Council.
Thank you, thanks.
I'll come to Ian first, and then I'll come to you, Dave.
So just on that, so I had a conversation with the people at the District Council. They were very helpful, actually, Jason. And I've got some, you know, no dog fowling signs. I've got about half a dozen of them, so I could have a stroll down there next week and put them up. I'm told that's perfectly okay. The other advice that you gave me, and I'd be interested to see what Jason says on this, is that when residents do approach, you should, you should tell them to report it. There is a very simple system for reporting it, and the more people who report it, the higher up the priority list it will come. So I think that's good advice for all councils, if people raise this issue.
Ian, can we get that put on to the website? That, just a link of, of some sort that we put on our website that says, got a problem with dog fowling, this is how to report it?
I can do that, Steve.
Jason, I'll come to you in a second, Dave.
A just update on the cycle path. There's a resident who's doing a sterling job. He's got carrier bags hanging in different strategic positions. There's one halfway down the trail, one at the other end of the trail, and one up near the Peak Rail entrance to the riverbank. And they're emptying on a regular basis. I don't know who he is yet. I want to try and track him down. But he's doing it, and he's been doing it for a year now, over a year. He's doing a fantastic job.
Brilliant, thank you, Dave. Jason Atkins?
Yeah, yeah, coming back on the subject of dog fowling and so on and so forth, the District Council are running a quite a big campaign. We have enforcement officers out. They'll also be spraying and highlighting dog muck on the paths with waterproof paint. So, you know, if there is any hotspots in Dalidale, please get in touch with the girl. He'll be the community engagement officer, which would be Becky Bryant, I think. So, you know, get her involved. If there is any areas that really do need attention, then please get in touch with her.
Brilliant. Well, I can, I can tell you that Dawn has been put in posts on the Facebook site regarding the spraying of, of the, the mess that's been left behind. I know it's quite a problem. The nursery, the nursery down the road from you and I, Alan, there's a path that leads up the back of Dalidale Junior School, and that path is always littered. And, but there is a bin at the end of there. But what always, I always struggle with is people who put it into a bag and then just drop the bag. That just always seems crazy to me, because, you know, why go to the bother of picking it up, but then just throwing it away anyway? Anyway, sorry, Sean, you're...
So, just slightly adjacent to Jason's vision, is the electoral review that's going on now. Jason can probably tell us more about it, but responses are up until 2nd November, that there is the electoral, electoral review, if anybody wants to have a look and chat about it with me.
Okay, brilliant.
Okay, they're changing the boundaries on districts, they change ward numbers.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Sean.
Sorry.
Sorry, Anne.
Yep. If we're putting something on our website about dog mess, can we just point out that if people put it in a biodegradable bag, it takes about three to five years, that bag, to biodegrade in Derbyshire? Because one of the problems is, people put it in a bag, and it says biodegradable, and they think it goes like instantly, and of course it doesn't. They don't understand that it's still a plastic bag. It just biodegrades quicker.
Absolutely right, that, Anne. I know we walk the dogs, and it's frustrating to see that people have picked it up and then just discard the bags. It's crazy.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions on that?
No.
Lovely. If we move on to the Twinning report, I've had an email from Twinning. They actually haven't got anything to report. Kevin's been aware, who is the Chair of Twinning?
Steve, I've lost you. Lost you there.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can now.
Yeah, sorry, I was just saying that Kevin, who is the Chair of Twinning, sent an email. They haven't had any meetings, so there's no progression with anything due to Covid, so there is nothing to report. Okay?
Okay.
Lovely. Finance, okay. So if we move on to finance, let me just get all my finance documents. So, if we start off with the NGC pay scales for 2021. So basically, every year, the pay, the pay rises on the NJC, the NJC scale for council employees. As Sean, Sean sent an email out pointing out that this month, it was this year, rather, it was only five months late. So when we look at the figures for what the salary is for employees, they, they will be up slightly, because we have a five-month back pay in which we have to go back to April to award the pay, the salary for Sean, Ian, and Anthony Crowder, I think's included in that as well, Sean, isn't he?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Have you all had a chance to have a look over the, this increase in salary paperwork? Everybody comfortable with that? Everybody happy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lovely, okay. If we can then go on and go to the payments for approval, has everybody looked at the payments for approval?
Yes, it's the second one that came out. It's the one that came out today, not the one that came out yesterday. Jason, you'll have the right one.
Okay, the only amendment that is on here at the minute is the third one down on the list, which is for £664.64p. It says assistant clerk wages. That actually is incorrect, it's a typing error. That should say footpath warden, but it can't be changed until realtors go in and do whatever they've got to do to the system. So just bear in mind that the 66464 is for the footpath warden. It is not for Sean or Ian. Okay?
It's right on the bank.
It is right on the bank, and it's just not on this sheet. Is everybody comfortable with all the payments? And if they are, I would like to, I'd like to propose that we accept these payments for this month. Is that you seconding, Dave? Yeah, all in favour?
Yeah, that's everyone.
If we then go on to the budget monitoring for September, again, have we all had a chance to look at this? Okay, I'd like to propose we accept these as a true reflection for September. Thank you, Jason Atkins, for seconding that. All in favour? Brilliant, thank you. And then if we go on to the bank reconciliation, again, I've got that in front of me if anyone's any questions. But if we're happy, I'd like to propose that we accept the figures here for, for September for the banking reconciliation. Is that you seconding, Councillor Atkins? Thank you. All in favour? Brilliant, thank you. Nobody had any questions about any of them, so if we move on to the report and recommendations from the Planning Working Party, and I'm sorry, I'm just going to go and turn my light on. Just bear with me.
Okay.
I need to do the same. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Right, okay, so Planning Working Group met on Monday. We looked at three applications. First one was for Homecroft, Old Hackney Lane. Don't know, this one's been before us a few times. If you remember, it's a bungalow that's been put in, in fill between two houses opposite the first field on the left-hand side as you come off the A6. So, the bungalow, I don't quite know why it says erection of dwelling with detached garage, because the dwelling's already there. But basically, I think it's, it was to discuss the, the erection of the garage. We've looked at it. We haven't got a problem with it, so we decided we put that forward with no objections. Next one was three properties on Ocre Avenue, installation of external wall insulation to properties. Looking on street view, it seems that a lot of the houses have already had this done already, but in brick. This particular application's to be done in render. We did discuss this, and it was noted that some of the properties are done in render already. And also, it was also noted that it is actually government guidelines now to, to get social housing insulated. So we have no objections. We would prefer brick, but we're happy to go with what the, what the plans are.
Julie?
Yeah.
Just interrupt. Councillor Atkins got his hand up.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, it is finishing off. The first tranche was done years ago to the council-owned properties. These are private properties that have been, we've able to secure a big grant from government to do it. So it's bringing them up to spec in terms of heat loss and things like that. So it should buy the District Council itself.
Right, okay. You're right. Okay, when it coming in from Rob Coggins, I kind of thought it would be social housing. But yeah, that's brilliant. Excellent. And the last one we looked at on Monday was 148 more ledge. They wanted two-storey side extension with the bay window on the, the lower level and dormer windows in the roof. Had a look at the plans for this. Really nice, what, what they're planning, totally in keeping, not interfering with anybody else because of the layout of the, on the location plan. So again, no objections. So can I propose that we put those through, all three, with no objections?
Do we have somebody to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favour?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Carolyn, did you put your hand up then?
Sorry.
Yeah, lovely. So I'm just checking that everybody's had their say, that's all. Any questions on any of them? We're happy just to move on.
Right, no, I've got some more. Sorry. Since, since Monday, Ian can verify, we have been inundated with planning applications. So I've gone through them. Three of them, fortunately, were just for our information only, so we don't need to discuss them. But that leaves us with two that I'd just like to run past you and just make sure that everybody is on board. So the first one is Rotherwood Cottage, which is Dale Road South, and it's opposite the entrance to, it's the south entrance to St Elphins. It was one big house. It was called Rotherwood House, and it's been split into two. What they're proposing to do is to come forward and up to the, the actual boundary wall that's on the A6, and build a new entrance. So they'll, they'll be demolishing the existing single-story extension, and there'll, there'll be erection of, of a single story to the front, and then the side story will now become two, two-story. The single story on the side will now become two-story. Had a look at the, the plans for this, and again, really quite impressed with it. They've obviously taken on board the neighbourhood plan, the planning on using locally sourced materials and putting in wooden windows to match the existing ones. So I think it's really sympathetic, in keeping. There's a couple of other houses along there that are already up to the boundary with the A6. So again, I don't have a problem with, with that. Do we want to vote on that one now, or do you want to hear the other one?
Has anybody...
Vote on it now.
...over that?
Do we vote on it now, Sean? Yeah? Okay, so I'd like to propose that we put that forward with no objections.
Second that. Alan, thank you. All in favour?
Thank you.
Thank you. That's carried.
Just one more. It's a single-story rear extension and re-roof of existing side extension, and it's for Arley House, which is on Station Road, and it's actually diagonally opposite the lodge on Station Road. They've already got a side extension that looks like it was probably a garage at some point, so it's, it's flat-roofed. But it has got a stone elevation. So what they're wanting to do is to replace the roof on this side extension, and then put a completely new single-story extension across the back of the house. Again, very sympathetically done. And I personally have no objections, as long as that, you know, the sort of the, the north elevation extension remains in stone as it is now. So I'd like to propose that we accept that with no objections. So I'd like to propose that we accept that with no objections.
Would anyone like second that? Thank you, Anne. Okay, yeah, that's most carried, that's unusual to get no objections at all, Julie, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. I think they're picking up on the neighbourhood plan at last.
Yeah, hopefully. Okay, so if we can move on to point 12, which is update on the Whitworth Centre and Trading Matters, that'd be councillor Long.
Thanks, Steve, not much to say this month really. August, as you can imagine, was a really good month. Cafe was maxed out really on the back of people getting half price meals on Monday to Wednesday. We are open, as I think I referred to, as we said, we'd be open in September on limited basis in the rest of the building. Obviously, it's just quite interesting at the moment, there's a lot of interest, people contacting the centre around, yeah, yeah, we want to book a room, but actually, I think amongst themselves, when they then go back to their own group and test the appetite within their group for actually making that booking, it tends to then quite often go away or be delayed. So that's obviously fuelled a bit by, I think, general nervousness around our community at the moment around Covid and getting together generally. Lottery project has kicked off well, obviously nothing concrete coming out of that yet, I'll keep the council up to date on what's happening there. And we've had a long process and a good process on finding a new general manager, two finalists presented to the trust board last week. And we have got our preferred candidate to meet with our deputy general manager today to go through current issues and get a view from the preferred general manager on what that person would do with it more, just trying to see if the individual can build a relationship with the deputies on that, we'll get feedback from that on Monday and then decide what we do on that next week. And then there's a number of little maintenance projects happening and a lot of equipment turning up particularly related to Covid, more, you know, sanitising stations, something called a fogger, which is a way of cleaning out meeting rooms fast, fast, very quickly and it eliminates Covid virus as a part of that, that cleaning mechanism. So yeah, nothing, nothing, nothing negative, it's been a good month.
Okay, thank you for that, Alan. Can I just say, Alan, obviously, I don't know if everybody's aware, but myself and Julie Daly, we attended the Whitworth meeting last Thursday, which wasn't a normal meeting, it was, there was a number of items discussed and it was quite a long meeting, I think, Alan, wasn't it? It was a.
Longer than we normally have, yes.
Yeah, two and a half hours. And I'd just, I'd just like to say, the staff at the Whitworth seem to be doing a tremendous job of making sure that, that they keep the place open, they keep it clean, they keep it running and that people who are coming in are happy. I mean, I've been down there a couple of times in the last week and everybody who's, who's visiting seems very happy, the service is, is being brilliant. So that, you know, personally, I'd like to thank the staff for that because they've kept the place really, really well. The floors look amazing, the work that's been done on the floors, and if you get a chance, go in and have a look at that. But it, what, what, what overall came for me from the meeting last Thursday, and, you know, I've asked, I have sent councillor along some questions for some things that I've, I've got a few, few things to ask. But it seems to me that over the course of the past six months with Covid, the councillor, sorry, the staff of the Whitworth and the trustees have worked very hard to actually put the Whitworth into a very good financial position, certainly far better than was perceived at the start of the Covid problem back in February, March time. So I'd just like to say, well done to everybody at the Whitworth for that.
That's good of you to say, Steve, and it would be really nice if the council could write to staff and just say, you know, thank you for the work you've done through, through Covid, they obviously have had a tough time, particularly the two that have been working through that, and obviously the ones have helped restart it. So obviously, I say thank you to them on a regular basis from the trustee board, but it'd be great if the council could do that as well.
Don, could you, could you do that or do you want me to do that?
Well, and then if you want to sign it?
Whichever, yeah, I'm happy to either do it or just sign it, whichever, we'll have a chat about that on Tuesday.
No problem.
Lovely, okay, thank you. If, does anybody have any questions? Are we happy to move on?
Move on.
Okay, on to number 13, policies and committees' terms of reference to be approved. Okay, so if we go on to the first one, which is a bullying and harassment policy, conversations I've had with Sean regarding this policy, I asked, was it already covered in our councillor codes of conduct? I've been informed by Sean and Chris Moes is that actually we should have this policy in place set in black and white, therefore we're all, we're all duty bound to follow it. I've read it through, I would hope everybody else has read it through, so I'd like to propose that we accept the bullying and harassment policy. Sorry, councillor Atkin?
Yeah, I'm quite happy to second it, I've read it all this afternoon, I think you said a great document.
Brilliant, thank you. Dave?
I was going to second it, but.
All right, okay, so all in favour? Lovely, that's motion passed. If I can then come on to the, the one which is the personnel handbook. Now, this was, I think, 37 pages of quite tedious reading, no, 35, sorry. But I've read it all, there was a couple of little bits which I think have been amended, Sean, haven't they?
They have, and it's been reissued.
Okay, so I've read it all, again, no, no particular issues. The only thing I'd like to ask all councillors to do is, if they could have a look at page 27, not now, just in your own time, which is, it's titled Protocol on councillor stroke officer relationships. One of the things that I'd like to say is, since kind of, I think it's fair to say that some relationships within the council have been quite, quite fraught in all honesty for various reasons, and I think it's time, and I'd like to say it's a shame this meeting isn't face to face, we would have liked it to be, but I think it's time that we all move on and we, we start to look at how we treat and how we speak to each other. And I think it's a very good, a very good document that actually makes you think specifically on the councillor officer relationships, makes us think about how we interact with everybody, not just the staff but with each other as well. And I think it's important, if we can, that we move on at this stage, if we have any issues, we address them and we try and do it in a nice friendly manner where possible and keep ourselves in check if that's possible. Okay, anybody have any questions on that? It's page 27, by the way, 27 and halfway 28, it's a 10 minute read, if you can read it, I would strongly advise you do, just may give us a little slightly different way of thinking, and I do think we'll be more effective as a council if we work together as opposed to arguing, which is not constructive. Okay? Lovely, so I'd like to propose then that we accept the personnel handbook.
Sorry, Steve, could we just, because I would like to read it and go through page 27, whatever that number was, is it possible to leave that one till next time because I've got any comments, it's kind of too late, isn't it?
And I'm happy to come back to that next month if you wish to read it, Alan. It's, it is, it is, it talks about things like respecting one another and what have you, so I, Sean, do we want to put it to the vote and see if people want to leave it till next month or should we just move it into next month?
So the way, the way.
We only got it today, didn't we, only got the updated version of it today, I just don't have a chance to read it.
The, the way, the way that I'm sort of hoping, as I say, that we, I'm trying to put it in place with other things that we're doing around the personnel, I'm trying to get all of the HR and personnel documentation in place. I'm happy to leave it, I can arrange a meeting with the staff to fill it in on another day in October, if that's what you need to say, it's just, if I can get it, as soon as, if everybody could have read it, you know, fully updated version for the, for the next meeting, that'd be brilliant. But if you need to leave it, you need to leave it.
Okay, the only, the only actual change in there is on the first page, point three, where it says that candidates invited to interview where possible will be given at least one week's notice, and then it says all letters sent to successful candidates, that's been altered to, it would be correspondence sent to unsuccessful candidates, that's, I think, the only physical change to the document, Sean, isn't it?
I took out the zero.
Oh yes, you took out the zero. But yeah, okay, so if we, I'd like to propose then that we revisit that one at next month's meeting to give everybody a chance to read that. But I do, the reason I specifically came to page 27 was because I think it's important we build them relationships and we work efficiently and effectively as a council for the benefit of the people of Dalidale.
Sorry, can I just ask, could you just clarify again, Sean, you said you took out the zero or something, you froze at that point, I couldn't quite hear you, sorry.
There's one little section of it which is about training entitlements for people. Now, it's, so obviously some of us, you know, need, you know, training over the years and things like that, and it's just the amount that the council's willing to give you as entitlement, we don't really want to commit to giving people a set amount of training because we either need to, you know, they get training as they need training, but if you give them a monetary amount for supporting, nobody's doing a degree, so nobody would need the monetary support at this point because they're not in a role or doing anything that would require financial support at this point that the council can't go through and votes on individually for each individual member of staff.
Right.
So it's just a zero, it was five zeros and I've turned it to one zero.
Just for the record, and that was on page 11, and it's about a third of the way down the page, and it says D general, and it's, it's just basically, when it was first issued, it had five zeros and it's just been changed to one zero.
Right.
I got excited with zeros.
Right.
And we're happy to move that into next month then, yeah? Okay, thank you. So then if we move on to the committee terms of reference, so we've got four committee terms of reference, all of which we looked at last month. So if I start off with the finance advisory committee terms of reference, has everybody had a chance to read them?
Yeah.
Happy with them?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to propose that we accept the finance advisory committee terms of reference.
I'll second it, chair.
Thank you, all in favour? Thank you, that's motion passed on that. If we go on to the personnel advisory committee, as everybody read them. I'd like to propose that we accept them as our terms of reference for the personnel advisory committee. Thank you, all in favour? Lovely, thank you. If we can go on to the planning advisory committee terms of reference, has everybody read them? Okay, I'd like to propose that we accept the planning advisory committee terms of reference. Thank you, Dave, everybody in favour? Thank you. And the community services committee. Okay, so this one slightly differently because we are giving delegated powers to the community services committee, so I'd like to propose that, has everybody read them?
Yeah.
Yeah, lovely, I'd like to propose that we accept the community service committee terms of reference.
Second, chair.
Thank you, councillor Atkin, all in favour? Thank you, okay, so they're all resolved. Okay, brilliant, thank you. Now then, on to perhaps a more contentious one, membership of the committees. So if we go through them one, one by one and we look at each committee, we, for me, I think what's important here is, is that we, we share the work equally so that everybody takes on committees that they feel comfortable with and they can give a little bit of time to, because I think we'll all work better if we've got a good mix of people taking on them committees. So if we start with personnel, who would like to volunteer for personnel? Sorry, sorry, Ian.
Sorry to interrupt, but actually, we're not starting with a blank piece of paper here, so we did ask people to express an opinion, so would you like me, I've got that in front of me at the moment, would you like me just to run through people who self nominated or asked?
Yes, please, so if we, as we go to each one, will you just do that first then, Ian?
I can do that, yeah, so which one do you want to do first? Okay, so personnel, the only, and I apologise if you did get in touch with us and you're not on this list, but we did try our best, Sean, to do this. So the two nominees I've got on there are you, Steve?
Ian, you're gone, you're going to have to do that again, you went.
Oh, sorry, okay, so the two nominees are councillor Crystal, Steve Crystal and councillor Alan Long.
Okay, can we have some more volunteers for this, please? Just bear in mind that the terms of reference for this one, it's saying that we should have four councillors on this committee. So if we can have two more volunteers, please, that would be brilliant.
Just on that, Steve, sorry to interrupt, but it did say that you, the deputy chair couldn't be on as well for a degree of independence.
Okay, so, Jason Farmer, lovely.
Yeah.
Anne Welsh is the other hand that's up.
Lovely, okay, so that's four of us on personnel there. So if, if we can go to finance.
Okay, so finance, the three names I have are councillor Steve Crystal, councillor Alan Long and councillor Dawn Ward.
Okay, now on this one, it says that we should have five councillors on finance, so can we have two more volunteers for this one, please? James, lovely.
Carolyn, I need one more.
One more, please. Dave, lovely. Okay, planning, so we come on to the planning committee, so this one requests five councillors. Sorry, Dawn, are you, are you volunteering for planning?
Planning, Dawn Ward.
No, hold on, I've turned the wrong thing off. You're muted. Brain's mush. Could I, do you have to be quora for finance?
Yes.
Would you get somebody else on as well? Because I may not be staying on finance.
Okay, so you, so you don't want finance?
I want to be on finance, but I just think it would be advisable to get a standard if you need five to be quora.
A reserve.
Yes, please.
To be quora, Dawn, we only need three.
Oh, that's fine then, okay.
Let me just check the terms of reference on that, but I'm fairly certain it says to be quora, we only need three. Yeah, that's what it says, just three. So yeah, so that's fine then, sorry councillor Atkin?
Yeah, you could consider substitute members, I don't know whether that's something Sean's talked about, just in case you're not quora and you could actually use a sub for it.
We've not needed it at the moment because we've got four or five on and quora is, but we could go for that if we are having issues, that's, that's a great recommendation, thank you, Jason.
Okay, so if we go on to now then the planning, the planning advisory, so planning advisory again says that we should have five councillors on this one, so what names do we already have, please?
Luckily enough, I've got five names for that already, so that's councillor Julie Daly, councillor Caroline Curtis, yourself, Steve, Jason Farmer and Dave Oakley.
Lovely, okay. Brilliant, and then the last one, community services, which again, community service says we require seven councillors, please, on this one. What, what do we already have, please, Ian?
We're nearly there, it's a popular one, this one, we've got six, so we've got Dave Oakley, we've got you again, Steve, we've got Jason Farmer, we've got Julie, James and Caroline.
I'll go on the community services committee.
Gavin, brilliant.
Absolutely fantastic, thank you everyone for that.
Sorry, Steve, can I just ask you a question, it's fairly straightforward one, do you elect the chair at the first meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Brilliant, okay, thank you everyone for that, that's brilliant to fill up them committees, that's really good news. We will have a few more committees coming up in the October meeting, which again, we're going to need bodies on, so hopefully it'll be as seamless at the October meeting. And yeah, all I can say is, let's just, let's just forge good teams and make things happen for the area. Okay, so if we move on to councillor nominees for the Whitworth Trust, as I, as I said earlier, myself and councillor Daily Julie, we attended a meeting with the, with the Whitworth Trust last Thursday. Myself and Julie Daly have agreed to join the trust, which puts the councillor. Myself and Julie Daly have agreed to join the trust, which puts the councillor position up to five. We absolutely need two more people on the trust, please. We, we need to make sure that we fill up the trust to make sure that the council have the control over the trust and that we, we do what is best for the Whitworth. So we're up to five at this stage, so do we have two more volunteers, please? Okay.
We're going to have two more councillors coming in.
We will. What I'm going to do is, is anybody minded at this stage to kind of think, okay, we need two more, so I'm happy to go on? Even if one more person were to join at this stage, it then puts the council in the strength of position that it has the overall majority vote. Is anybody prepared to do that who isn't a member of the trust already? I'll presume that to know, so we're going to have, we're going to have two councillor vacancies. We will look to fill them slots and look to get people on to the trust, but at least, Alan, we're up to five now.
Good, that's great, thank you for volunteering, you too.
No problem. Okay, and we're going to go on to the community awards. Shall I have you, Alan, on that one, please?
Yeah. I guess since we last spoke on this a month ago, two things have gone on. So Dawn, Sean and I have met and we have organised, put in place a number of things. So the peak advertiser are now promoting the awards at the end of this month and we will be including in the peak advertiser as well as the feature they're running, the specific leaflet and application form that people can fill in and return if they don't want to follow the online route, because obviously the preferred online route. The sponsors are all sorted and have committed their funding to each individual award. Text has obviously been written for both the peak advertiser work and the community voice work. We've printed with thanks to Sean on working with Louise to get leaflets and a few posters presented. As we said last time, it's obviously harder to get this across to people this year than last year, but I was encouraged at the last meeting, everybody said that they would, they would do their bit to help promote the awards and it can be just as simple as ringing up particular interest groups and asking them through their own communication routes, because all, you know, all the local charities and so on will have their own ways of communicating with members, can help us do the job ourselves. So what Sean, Dawn and I did, and we distributed this either yesterday or the day before, is a start for 10 on who might be able to help us with each task, other, over and above what myself, Sean and Dawn are already doing. So I guess what I need feedback on now is people's willingness to, to help with the suggested task, more than happy people to, to switch tasks around with one another and, you know, if somebody else is better, we obviously lost councillor Melon now, who'd asked to, to focus on schools and schools are going to be really important, aren't they, in terms of finding the, particularly the young teacher of the year award, that's going to come from our schools more than anything else.
I'd be happy to pick up schools.
Thanks, Anne.
So, yeah, I mean, I accept it's going to be hard to work to get everybody in there, but to get everybody involved, but the way is through, not trying to do everything ourselves, but by getting others to help, help us.
Yeah.
Yeah, so really, I need, I need your support, I suppose, on whether you will pick up the items we suggested and if you're not happy to do a particular item, then maybe try and swap it with another councillor, please.
Okay, so the first question that I'd like to ask on that, Alan, is, does anybody want to swap the job they've been given on that list? Been listed on the list and been asked to do.
Or indeed, I might have missed something, Steve, so it might be something that should be on the list that isn't on there. If anybody's got thoughts on that, it'd be helpful.
Any thoughts? Or any questions? Okay. So what, all I would ask as the chair is, I would just ask that we, we, we need the community awards to be a success, so if can all agree to do the tasks that we've got on the list to support the awards, it should be, it may not be exactly what we wanted, but it should be a good event to recognise people in the community that deserve to be recognised. Is everybody happy with that? Sean?
Given that we've got councillor Atkin on now, would you be willing to help me with a little bit of the advertising, councillor Atkin, maybe using Derbyshire Dales and your sort of district council stuff, is that all right? Will you give me a hand with that?
Yeah, I'm sure I can get it distributed for you.
Thank you, you're staff.
Brilliant, okay.
Sorry, Steve, if anybody wants, if, if, if anybody is talking to the pubs or the schools and wants a poster, the school requests one, just I guess, let, if Sean, are you happy for people to refer that? We've got posters and got leaflets. Yeah.
And if you're not getting anywhere with the schools, just let me know, because most of the schools round here are mine, so I have ways of meeting schools too.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. You had your hand up?
Yeah, we, we may have to be a little bit careful with the care homes, apparently there's a Covid issue at the moment. One of the, it's a very severe one down on the Essex, so that might be an issue at the moment.
I think it will, I think it will, Dave, I mean, we've got to be, we obviously can't go in there, but if nothing else, we could maybe ring the, because those care homes are similarly, there is a health and social care award and there'll be people who are doing just an amazing job in those care homes. As I say, it's not about us doing the communication in the care homes, it's the care home being aware of it and perhaps doing something for their own communication routes around that care home. So we don't have any more people going in there physically, but they're aware of it and they can promote it themselves.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Again, all I'd like to say is, look, sorry, Sean, just before, just before we do, all I was going to say is, it may not be the event we want it to be, but let's just make, make it work and have it do its best for the, the community. Sean?
For the care homes, if you want to offer them the opportunity to ring their nominations in, then that, that could be something, if they ring us the nominations in, if they haven't got the, they haven't got the IT equipment that they need, if, if anybody wants to nominate their care or something, they can ring, ring the office directly and just leave an answer phone message or, or leave something for me and we'll work it from there if that's the best way for them.
Yeah, I do, I do know that they are monitoring at the moment, who I've worked in one, so it's, it's very critical at the moment around here.
I'd love to get 50 care workers nominated for the work they're doing and that would be brilliant.
Okay.
Steve? Steve?
Is he frozen?
I think Steve's frozen. Steve?
Well, this is.
Yeah.
Yep, so this is perhaps one for Sean and Ian. The posters, are you getting them physically printed off?
Yeah, yeah, they'll, we'll have some physical ones and some email ones.
That was going, that was my, my next thing, if we're going to put something on the website, you know, that people, obviously for, for like the, the care homes where we can't go in, if, if we have the ability for people to go on to the website and print off their own poster.
Would that be? Yeah, I can do that, that's easy, yeah, that's not a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, no worries.
Has everybody got the actual briefing of what awards are? Or do I, or shall I circulate that again in terms of?
Yeah.
Can you do that, please?
Circulate it again.
That would be helpful.
Thank you, Alan, for that.
Gone again.
Steve?
Yeah, can everybody hear?
Anybody there?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm frozen.
You need another 10p, Steve.
Crazy, it's ridiculous, right, okay. So thank you for that, everybody, and let's just, like I say, make it as big a success as we can. If we can go on to point 17, there is a course with chair skills.
Yeah.
Because I'm new to the chair, I think it'll be beneficial. So I'd like to ask everybody to approve me going on that course.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we all in favour of that?
Yeah.
Brilliant, thank you.
Yeah.
We've already, we've already done point 18, so I'd like to move on to point 19 and that's to approve expenditure on website accessibility regulations. I would like to hand this over to Ian to explain because he understands it far more than I do.
Okay, so I'll tell you very briefly what this is about, but the good news to start with is that we're not actually asking for any money today. That doesn't mean that we might not come back to the next meeting and ask for some money, but since Sean and I found a bit of time to start looking at this this week, I think we've changed our mind on the way we want to deal with it. So the first thing to say for those that aren't up to speed on this, this is about giving everybody, people who are visually impaired, people who can't use mice, those sorts of things, the same access to our website, the content on it that everybody else can get. The good news is that we use a product which is called a content management system which arranges the pages for us and navigates people through them. That's been tested and it, and it's compliant, so that's the good news, that's provided by a third party. I did some testing on it too and I agree with that, so I think it is cleared. What that leaves for us then is the content that we put up there. So this is things like posters, as you just mentioned, Julie, we put those things up there. They need to work for everybody, even those with visual impairments, so we need to make sure that things like the background and the foreground and the fonts all work for everybody. We don't put that much of that stuff up there, so Sean and I can go through that and do some stuff with that. The other things on there are videos, so this is probably going to be the last video we post without some form of subtitles or something like that. That's going to mean a bit of work for us, it may even mean I come back to you and ask for some money for software to do that. We're also going to need to think about transcribing these meetings so that people, if they want them, can get a written summary of the meeting, so there's some implications there for us. The real challenge is on documents, all of our documents, all the documents for this meeting are on the website, people can ask to see them at any time and a lot of those we know aren't compliant at the moment. We've found a format that makes them compliant, so we issue them in PDFs, you will get them in PDFs which open in your web browser, there's a form of a PDF that is compliant and we may have to do some conversions on it. The good news is that by the 23rd, all that we actually have to have in place is a plan to do all of this stuff, which I'm going to be working on next week, and an accessibility statement, which is on the website and tells everybody exactly where we are. And Sean's done that already and it's a very good statement that. So we're sort of covered at the moment and once we've got the plan in place, we've bought ourselves a bit of time and I'll come back to the next meeting and tell you where we've progressed since.
Brilliant, thank you, Ian. Does anybody have any questions? James?
And the costings for this, what it's going to cost and everything like that, will that be at the next meeting as well?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so, James, I'll be honest with you, we're trying to avoid any cost if we can, I think we'll be lucky to do that. I think I'll probably be coming back to you guys and asking for a bit of money for software is all. But the reason that we put it on as a cost item is that our providers were offering us three options, one of which was a few hundred pound, another, and the most expensive was 7.50. And Sean and I have looked at all of those and we've decided none of them will do as good a job as we will actually. So we decided to take that route instead, if you're comfortable with it.
Okay, no problem.
Brilliant, thank you, Ian. Okay, if we can now move on to 20, the pantomime 2021.
So I spoke to the pantomime organiser, even if we were allowed to have pantomime, they can't do anything for us this year. So they have offered us the date of the 28th of December next year to do two pantomimes, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. Again, it's a provisional because we don't quite know where we will be, but hopefully we will be able to have some touch with pantomime next year. But, but yeah, provisionally, that's the date that they can do, is the 28th of December, if everybody's happy with that, because the holidays fall, the school holidays fall quite late that year, they're in a bit of a, they're quite late on the school holidays, so that was the only time they had while the kids were not in school.
Dawn, are we only getting one, one day off them rather than the normal weekend then?
We're getting two performances, which is what we get before, we had two performances, we'd have a matinee in the morning, so instead we're going to have a morning and a matinee.
Right, okay, that's fine. Okay, everybody happy with that? Okay, move on to number 22, Dalidale in Bloom Heads of Agreement. Now then. Has everybody read the heads of agreement for Dalidale in Bloom? Okay. Everybody happy with them? And if they are happy, I would like to propose that we accept the heads of agreement for Dalidale in Bloom.
I'm quite a bit of a chairman, second them, Chair.
Dave, you've gone.
All in.
You're back again?
No, he's, he's gone.
Gone again.
What?
I'm up. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, you got me back, so, okay, so it's been seconded by councillor Atkin, all.
All in favour?
All in favour, yeah.
That's everyone.
Brilliant, thank you, everyone.
Chair for me, maybe it would be helpful if those aren't speaking, turn their microphone off, we've had this at the district council, sometimes it's the bandwidth being taken up, so I suggest if you're not talking, turn your microphone off.
I can't, I'm recording.
It's fine, I actually think it's my internet as opposed to a problem with the bandwidth, to be honest, but that's something I'll take up with them tomorrow. Okay, so if we move on to point 22, can everybody hear me? Okay, so we're, we're looking to approve the purchase of staff and council equipment. So there's been a request that councillors and staff should all have lanyards and ID cards. Sean, do I need to address each of these individually or can I just go through the list and then address them all at the end?
If you could do it individually, I'd be, I'd be grateful and then we can approve costs for each one.
Okay, so then if we, if we start with the lanyards and ID cards, the suggestion is that we should all have them as councillors and staff, which is not a bad idea to identify us. Is everybody, does anybody have any questions on that, Alan?
Just, just one thing, which is kind of obvious really, we, we have issues at work, not, everyone has an ID card, we've had issues in the past of not collecting them, we have quite a turnover of councillors, but we don't, what we need to have is a robust process of making sure those IDs are returned when somebody leaves. So as long as it goes along with that, that we've got, you know, we make sure that happens, otherwise it could be a bit embarrassing.
Yeah, absolutely. James? You're muted, James, and you need to unmute yourself.
Yeah, when you, when I joined the council, I had to sign the terms and various paperwork, maybe that could include the fact that they have, you have to legally return the, the lanyards and ID into that signature document.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any costings for that, Ian and Sean? Ian, you're muted.
Right, the simple answer is no, and we, we left it with the printing company down in Tansling to come back to us, but they've not come back to us yet, or certainly when I was off last week, they hadn't come back to us. There is another option here, and since Jason's on here, perhaps I can ask him, Jason, somebody suggested that the district council might be able to help us with councillor IDs.
Yeah, possibly. I mean, we do do printing for people and we do issue lanyards ourselves. It's, I'll make an inquiry at the district, but I'm sure we'll be able to work something out.
Okay, well, I've written to you about that, so I hope you've got the email.
I've seen it today, yes.
Okay, good, excellent, okay. So, so any idea on cost, Jason?
Not off the top of my head because I'd have to ask the staff.
I'm asking Louise Mackenzie as well, because she, she may be able to, and she may be able to take all of our photographs.
Hey, and so we'll come back to that one when we've got some costings on that. We've got the footpath warden t-shirts and long sleeve polo shirts.
Bonne nuit, Steve.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. So Steve, we, we have got costings for those, so the, the request was for two short sleeve polo shirts with a council logo, and I think I'm going to be talking about the logo again in a minute, and they were 15 pound each plus that. And then the same was true for long sleeve polo shirts, which again, were 15 pound each plus that.
Current ones are from about 2000. Current ones are from about 2009. So they're, they're barely threads any longer.
Well, if we can get another 11 years out of the new ones, it'll be money well spent, about a pound a year per shirt, so.
Can we put the same request in that people have to return them when they leave?
Yeah, we will do. I'll speak to Anthony about that, yeah.
Irrespective of condition, I think, Sean, as well.
Yes.
It's council property. So there is already something, I think, in his contract that says about returning, or we can charge him for his council property.
I think the key is if he had one that developed a hole or something, he can't just put it in the bin. It has to be returned.
I'll speak to him.
Okay, is, is everybody happy with the proposal of £15 plus VAT for?
Appreciate it.
For, for tops, which comes to £60 plus VAT, £72 in total. Is that seconded by you, James? All in favour? Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Next one, petrol cans or petrol bottles, as it says here. I'm presuming it means petrol cans.
Yeah, it does.
All I would say on these is they're not terribly expensive, but it is really important that we have the right equipment for the job. We can't be, sorry, Sean.
They're about £15 each again. Well, they're £15 each again.
Okay, and again, they'll be returned upon no longer being needed or, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, so we need two at £15 each, if that's okay.
So that's seconded, all in favour?
Yeah.
Brilliant.
Thank you.
Shears? Okay, shears. Do we know how much they are?
Shears, we priced it around £20. So I would say 25 to be, to be safe.
So up to £25.
Twenty-five, yes.
Shears, so. Okay, is that you seconding that, James?
Yeah, absolutely.
All in favour? Lovely, thank you. A set of pruners?
£10, Steve, up to £10.
Sorry, Ian, what was that?
Up to £10, I think.
Up to £10.
Okay. Sorry, Alan, you're muted at the minute.
What on that? Are we confident that they, the individually signed off as, as competent? I know it's pretty basic stuff, but we got that. We've got that bit of paperwork that the person is competent.
We're in, we're doing that, yeah. We're doing that now as part of the meeting that we're having with him.
On Wednesday, it'll be dealt with, won't it, Sean?
Yeah.
Dawn? You're muted, Dawn.
Can you hear me now? I'm, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna leave this meeting. I'm not really, my brain's mush. I'm not making sense in my head, so.
Okay, thanks for coming.
Thank you. Sorry, see you soon.
Bye.
Right, okay, pruners.
Okay, so the pruners up to £10. Who'd like to second that?
Everybody.
Do you want anything pruning by any chance, guys?
The last one, long handled loppers. Do we have a price on the long handled loppers?
Usually a pop drink call on them.
Yes, up to, up to 50.
Fifty?
Wow. Yeah, up to 50. So they're 40, well, round about 40 to 50 pounds. So up to 50, if that's all right.
Hey, anybody want to second that?
If it makes you feel any about the telescopic.
Yeah.
And they're going to have to reach right up, aren't they, to do a decent job, yeah?
Okay, all in favour? Brilliant, thank you.
So sorry, Steve, I know everybody's enjoying this item. So there's a couple more that we didn't get time to transpose across. So the request is also for a pair of Vicky's utility trousers. Up to £30. Thirty-six regular, in case anybody was wondering.
Can I, can I just ask a question?
Dave?
I'm presuming all this is for Mr Crowther. And he's using a bladed strimmer and he's also, is he using any more power tools?
I don't believe he is, no.
No, just a trim.
Right, okay. So these trousers, are they capable of protecting him from flying debris?
They're very thick, professional work trousers. Why they cost a bit more, yeah.
Okay.
As well as you can, really.
Yeah, he's, he's just hitting undergrowth with a bladed strimmer, which is going to generate sharp edges, that's all.
Could, could we make sure they've also got the two reflective strips on them? So that if he's working roadside at any point, they are covered for risk assessment.
He ought to have a tabard as well.
True.
I think he has one.
I don't know. I've not seen him with it on.
I'll speak to him.
Okay.
I have got high ears if you need it.
Sorry, we haven't finished yet. And he also wants a pair of shorts.
I'm not thrilled about that due to if he's strimming.
No, it's a good point. And Dave just made that point. It's a good point, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thi, I think you've got to require, yeah, to comply with the risk assessment.
Yeah, I mean, what Ian's just saying, this, this situation needs someone on the committed that is about to be tacked on to need to do health and safety risk with it.
I've already done it, Dave.
On site?
Yeah, I'm doing it with him next week. But he's already got the risk assessment that he's working through.
Okay, right, let's turn him.
Okay.
What about footwear? We've not mentioned footwear with this, this man.
No, he's not asked for any, Dave.
He's not asked for any at the moment. I'll have a look at his boots when he comes in.
It's a legal requirement under health and safety. He has the correct footwear on.
We can do that on Wednesday when he comes in.
He's using the blade, he's using the bladed item, powered item.
That's just going to be more.
That's toe detectors.
I know, Dave.
The cheapest chips, but without them, he could chop his foot off.
Yeah, no, we'll check that, Dave, on Wednesday when we meet.
Okay.
Gloves and gloves.
And yeah, gloves as well.
Gloves.
Just want, who's, I mean, all the points that have been made around safety are really good. Who, who's taking responsibility for, or which group is taking off? Is that something we can delegate? So is Sean competent? I don't mean this horribly, to sign off for a risk assessment around a, an operative?
I am praying to do so, yes.
Okay.
Okay, brilliant. So other than the shorts and the lanyards and ID cards, we're happy with everything and they've all been, been approved. We just need to revisit the ID cards and check again boots and things for the next one. Okay, lovely.
Steve, can I just add in something there?
Jason?
With Alan using a, having a lanyard, it could be seen as a strangulation device whilst he's using power tools. We really need to say.
He needs a badge.
Yeah, he needs a badge. He needs either ID on his, on his clothing to identify him who he is. Somebody as an operative like that, having a lanyard, it's a strangulation problem. And it, it could be a major health and safety issue.
Yeah, that's, that's a very good point, Jason. And actually, if we think about it, when we have his shirts printed, we could actually get his name put on them at the same time.
There's only him using it. I think it'd be prudent to just have him, who he is, what his operative job is, and done from that. For him to wear a lanyard, pointless.
Yeah, agreed.
It's a duty of care to an employee. We've got to cover everything.
Just bear in mind that the additional printing on the shirts could put the price up very slightly. So can I just come back to that one then and say that we'll authorise up to £20 total per shirt for the additional printing? We, we were at 18, including VAT anyway. It shouldn't be any more than an extra £2 per shirt.
The, the ones we do at work, they are embroidered on one part, but they're also screen printed as well. So it's cheaper to do it that way.
Yeah.
Chair, you could delegate that authority to the clerk to make that decision. Yeah.
And Sean, and Ian, I will leave that with you guys then.
Can you propose it, please?
I'll propose delegation for that.
Lovely. Do we have somebody to second it, James? Thank you. And all in favour? Brilliant, thank you. Okay, moving on, point 23, updating, updating the council logo. Okay, so the council logo as it stands actually is quite difficult when it comes to printing things like shirts. And the council logo itself, actually, from feedback that I've received certainly, isn't very representative of anything to do with Dalidale, the council. If we're going to look at this logo, we, we need to look at something that is easy to print and something that actually reflects the area. Now, Alan sent some logos through to me, which I've had a look at with Ian. I think I forwarded you them, Ian, didn't I?
Yes, you did, yeah.
And there was nothing there particularly that I thought, oh, that's a nice logo. It represents the area. And, and we kind of, myself and Ian were talking about the possibility of perhaps opening up to residents to come up with a design for the logo with a possible prize of possibly up to £50, Dave.
What about the schools?
Schools. And schools.
They'll do it for free.
You may just get something quite remarkable.
But he saves me £50.
Yeah, you've got to live with it for a long while, Sean.
Yeah. We, if we do, I mean, again, I mean, if we were to put up a prize for whoever wins, whether it be £20, £30, £50, whatever it is. You know, I think what we've got to decide is we've got to decide what we want the logo to say. And again, I think this came from Alan. He raised a very good point. What do we want it to say? Do we want it to reflect the Whitworth and the park? Do we want it to be kind of old school? Do we want it to be modern? So I think what we really need to do is get our, our thinking caps on and decide what we want to do. I appreciate that, that the, that we could do it for free just within the schools. But I'd, I think if we opened up to the community, I think we'd get some quite budding artists that might like to take part in that. James?
Just a thought, obviously to inspire the people who are going to present the design. If they are successful, they'll be very proud that they've been successful. And maybe some kind of commissioned piece, a larger piece of the actual, the coat of arms, if you want to call it, to go in either a school, which one, which, which got the design, something they can keep of the design itself. They'll obviously prize that very much, I think.
Good idea.
Okay. So if we can, then what I'd, what I'd like to do is I'd like everybody to think about that and perhaps come back to the next meeting with some ideas on which, what we want the logo to say and, and perhaps a strategy as to how to get it out there into the community best. Is that okay with everybody? Jason, Palmer?
Could I just ask what the content of the previous logo gives us for, for the people of Dalidale? What is the, because I looked at it and I have to, I have to say, I did not understand it. It didn't make any relevance at all. Where, where have we come from to get to that one already?
I honestly don't know the answer to that.
Okay, it's time, it's time to get a new one.
Miss Mattkin?
I think you'll find previously it was the chief of wheat we had, which is something to do with the Whitworth.
Wow.
Now it's a tree.
It's got a prancing, a couple of prancing animals as well.
If it was a yew tree, it would probably be more representative of Dalidale rather than what we've got. I mean, the deer on it's quite good because Dalidale actually gets its name from Deilydale, which is the Dale of the Deer. So, I mean, there is that. Lap over with the deer.
It does look a bit like a unicorn.
Can we cut that off to the agenda then for the, for the next meeting? For people to come with ideas and suggestions with regards to, you know, as I say, whether we want to put a prize or whether we do, as James has suggested, a commission of a coat of arms or whatever it may be. Everybody happy with that?
Very much.
Lovely, thank you.
Chair?
Yes?
May I request that you propose an extension of the meeting for half an hour because you're about to run out of time?
No, we're not. It's only half.
You started at seven. It's an hour and a half.
We get two hours, don't we, till nine?
Hang on. I might be on Roseley standing orders.
Yeah, no, no, normally we start at seven.
Oh, wait, okay, that's all right then.
Yeah, okay.
Let me just double check then.
I'll wait.
All my others are, all my others are an hour and a half.
Yeah, but we're special.
We do always have.
Go on then, carry on.
Okay, personnel, we've already moved into private. Correspondence received, please.
So we, we have had, oh, hang on, Ian. It's all right. Do you want to go first? Never mind. So the first one is the information about Derbyshire Dale's electoral review, which is up on the website. So again, any comments for that are due by the 2nd of November. The green bins for your small bins should be coming out shortly. If you don't get them, if you contact the district council, that would be great. There is also, there's also been information on the green bin and the early bird scheme for your green bins. It's £35 up to January and then after that is £50. So get in early if you want your green bin emptying. Up until April of next year, it continues to be free. But after April, there, there is the charge for it. Well, the charge applies. The other thing that we've got is a gentleman named Stephen Chatau is doing, he's come to discuss with us the railway reinstating the Matlock and Buxton-Chinley rail link. He's just sent me, well, I've not had it very long, but he's sent me an email about wanting to talk to us and give us a presentation about the rail link. Now, looking at councillor Atkin's face, he may have seen this presentation previously. So, but I'll send it all out to you. And if you're all right to, to perhaps, we'll come up with a date for him to, to come and, come and entertain you.
Okay.
Yeah, if, just like to elaborate on that, the Peak District National Park had set against it, County Hall had against it as well. So I, I don't think they'll get traction from, I don't even think they'll get traction from the district council and away on some of the railway line. So they are probably on a high to nowhere. I'd like to see it reinstated, but costs are very prohibitive, very, very. I, I think the government funded wouldn't even cost the 30 mile, you know, even if you can get it, the, the government funding that's out there wouldn't cover it. So, so there'll be no buying from the county or the Peak District. So, you know, even though it's a nice idea, I don't think it'll go anywhere.
Thank you for that, Jason. Any other correspondence received? No, lovely. Okay.
That's all I've got.
That's brilliant. So if we go on to the date of the next meeting, that'll be Thursday, the 22nd of October, I believe. Is that right? Or am I in the wrong year? Oh, no, October, yeah, 22nd, oh no, 15th, sorry. Thursday, the 15th of October. And what I would like to do if possible is I'd like, dependent upon the COVID regs, I know we would, we would have liked to have had this meeting face to face in the Whitworth. Dependent upon them rules, I would like to get us back to the Whitworth where possible. If anybody have, has any issues with that, when we know what we're doing, if they could just let us know, that would be great. Okay, thank you, everybody, for that. Ian, can you stop recording, please?